Two, we're going to call to order the Board of Commissioners meeting for July 9. We would then, we would now at this time accept any public comment for items not appearing on today's agenda. Is there any public comment at this time? Seeing none, looks as they are under consideration as well. We'll look for a motion to approve the Thursday, July 2, Board of Commissioners meeting minutes.
Motion to approve the Thursday, July 2, Board of Commissioner meeting minutes.
I will second that.
Been moved and seconded. Any further discussion on the minutes? Hearing none, all in favor say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
And any abstentions?
I guess I should have stayed since I wasn't there.
Okay, and one abstention. Okay, two votes in favor, one abstention. The motion carries. Minutes are passed for July 2. And we'll go to our correctional facility. We have a consideration of reinstatement of Denise Murphy, Administrative Assistant at the Correctional Facility. Margaret, anything else you wanted to add to this?
I would just add that the Correctional Facility is increasingly becoming busier due to the admission of several out-of-county individuals, and so her, she's needed back in action.
Okay, sounds good. We would look for then a motion to approve this personnel reinstatement.
Motion to approve the personnel reinstatement for Denise Murphy.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Any final discussion on this? Questions? Hearing none, all in favor say aye. Aye?
Aye.
All right.
Motion is carried, okay. Heading now into the County Relief Block Grant update. We'll turn things over to Margaret.
Thank you. Thank you very much. I wanted to provide an update to the Board of Commissioners about work taking place within our county office to get started on the implementation of our County Relief Block Grant funds that we anticipate receiving any day now. As I reported on Tuesday, we've created an implementation team, and the implementation, the internal implementation team is comprised of Jason Moser, our Controller, Tom Martin, the Director of Financial Management, Krista Davis, our Risk Manager, Jeff Warren and Jody Lair, Director and Deputy Director of our Office of Emergency Services, Chad Joyce, our Chief Information and Records Officer, and myself. We are first and foremost looking at infrastructure and what we need to put into place to make sure that we can administer this grant within the timeframe of, and following all the compliance and regulatory guidelines, and doing this in preparation for a grant administrator to come on board. And so we met earlier this week, and we started talking about different components of our infrastructure: communications, finance, legal, and general administration. With regard to communications, we've set up a shared drive so that among us and including the Commissioners, we can share documents and general correspondence received from external parties. We've established a joint email address for anything related to the County Relief Block Grant where we can share items, and this is also that many of us are receiving questions, and we are also asking questions of DCED and others for clarification. And so to make sure that we're not duplicating efforts and being redundant, we're starting there in terms of our communications. Finance, our Director of Finance and our Controller have already put into place a system to identify expenditures that may come, that may be eligible for reimbursement through this block grant funding, and they are looking at ways to track our allocations, track our expenditures, track the revenues that come in. They will also, along with our attorney and our outside consultants, be looking at compliance issues in advance and upfront so that we, we know at the, at the start exactly what compliance requirements are involved here. And then, of course, we're also looking at making sure that everything we do feeds in appropriately and accurately to an audit document at the end of this grant period. We will be bringing our solicitor into the fold to talk about memorandums of understanding and any types of legal documents that we need in terms of contracts with our subrecipients, and looking at the types of information that we need to pull together for the submission of reports to DCED. The first one, of course, will take as due, I believe, on September 1st, so not all that far down the road here. In terms of the allocations, there are several different components to the allocations process, and right now, while we're working on an external allocations process, the county is compiling a list of all of the proposed projects and expenditures to present to the Board of Commissioners for consideration, projects that are, and expenditures that are retrospective, things we've already spent, and projects and things that are needed for prospective, or needed prospectively. We're looking at IT-related expenditures, including Citrix licenses, software, hardware. The proposal will include expenditures we made for supplies along the lines of cleaning and disinfecting. Be looking at our HVAC system and some upgrades related to filters and HIPAA, the HIPAA types of filters for our Willabang building. We will be looking at PPE that was not included as part of our PEMA allocation. So for example, we purchased a large quantity of masks very early on. That would be the type of expenditure that could be included in this proposal and addressed. We're looking at physical accommodations in terms of plexiglass barriers, any types of chairs that need to be replaced so that they can be disinfected more easily, any types of furniture that's necessary so that we can assist our employees in physical distancing. Krista Davis is the point person on pulling all of this together. We should have a draft proposal ready for you to look at next week. She's working very closely with Tom Martin and Jason Moser so that we know that we're not duplicating any of the requests that we'd be part of this proposal. The idea is, you know, we're starting with a 14.7, almost $14.7 million grant. We know that there's $200,000 that will be earmarked for administration, and then the next cut of this is to look at the county's piece of it, and carve that out early on so that
He was fine.
Commissioners have an idea of what the remaining amount looks like that would be eligible, which will be most of it, for external allocations. We know that an application process needs to be developed. We're talking about that right now. And a very big piece of the puzzle, so to speak, is PPE. I believe Jeff Warren's on the phone here, and he can speak to that in a minute. But this group is, can be expanded. We thought that it was important to not wait, and we're going to be meeting on a weekly basis and continuing to provide updates to you on a weekly basis. We know that you, Board of Commissioners, asked for some very high-level allocation proposal to be presented to you by the end of the month so that you can make your determinations and approve an applications process. So we know that we have about a little less than two, well, maybe a little more than two weeks. It's not, it's not far from now. So that, that's the track that we're on. PPE is complicated because we also have received PPE from PEMA. We've purchased PPE on our own. We have requests from external entities of all kinds, government, businesses, not-for-profits around PPE. So this will be a very important undertaking to identify exactly what that PPE component of the grant allocation looks like. And Jeff is our Director of Emergency Management, is the lead on this, and I'm going to turn it over to him so that he can walk you through where we are with the PPE component of the process. Jeff, are you there?
Thank you, everyone. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, thanks. We had some trouble with our phones on various social calls here. Anyhow, I kind of broke it down, and Margaret and I and the other members of that committee have spoken in great detail about this. So I'm going to talk a little bit about our original needs and supply, where we're at right now with inventory, and the big question is, in looking for guidance, ultimate decision from the Board, you know, what does the future hold for us? And there's a lot of variables there. Are we going to have a resurgence, like possibly or potentially predicted? Is there going to be another pandemic, and we need to maintain a stockpile for that? And then, the big one for the Board is, out of this CARES grant, who are we going to be asked to supply out of that? Obviously, part of our mission is to supply the first responders within the county as we've been doing. There's other variables, such as right now, the supply seems to be going down a little bit with some of the resurgence in some of the western states. So some of the items that were available for purchase have now been all bought up again. So in the beginning of all this, there was no supplies available, as you're aware of. There was nothing coming out of PEMA for almost the first month of this. Fortunately, we had a task force supply that was purchased back in 2009. All of that material was expired, and there was waivers put into place by CDC and the Department of Health within the state, and we've been able to utilize a lot of that. We've been trying to get rid of it first. We still have a substantial amount of that. And then we've received some PEMA supplies. Some of them are newer, some of them are just as old and expired as the task force supplies. Obviously, while they're still approved, we'd like to get rid of those supplies. To give you a little bit of an idea, and then we'll be downloading spreadsheets that are already prepared, that we've been keeping all along through this, onto that shared drive. But we've issued about 12,000 masks so far. We have about 23,000 in inventory, and I'll send you all this stuff. We, we couldn't get any face shields. We were utilizing the ones that volunteers were 3D printing at their homes and businesses for a while, and we recently received a large shipment. So we have over 11,000 face shields in inventory right now. You're aware of all the hardships over hand sanitizer. We still have some inventory, about 15 cases from the Big Springs Distillery. We have a few of the alcohol-based smaller bottles left, two hundred of those possibly. And then, we just received a large shipment of hand sanitizer and an eight-ounce gel pump bottles. And we actually have over 2,500 of those right now in stock. Those are the ones that I brought up to the Commissioners' office about a week ago, and left everybody a few. So that's good. Another big part of this is going to be what's happening with elections, and are you receiving any word about receiving PPE from PEMA, you know, the State Department to cover for elections, or are you going to be looking at us for that? Margaret and I have talked. I've seen some of the requests for PPE that came in front of the CARES Act. My personal opinion is, is, you know, if a municipality or a business or entity asks for PPE funds, I would prefer we, they get the funds and get their own PPE. I don't know if we want to turn it into the central repository for everybody in the county, and I don't know if we have the space for that. Certainly going to put a drain on our manpower and our ability to do our other tasks. So that being said, one of the things to keep in mind is, all the PPE we have right now, with the exception obviously of the masks that the county bought themselves, was already bought and paid for by the state or federal government, so none of that is reimbursable. Something I ask that the Board keep in mind, that the task force supplies that cost several hundred thousand dollars back in 2009, the task force doesn't receive the same funding anymore. We don't have the funds to replace that. And also, the guidance we received in the last few weeks since the CARES Act has come out is that the counties are individually supposed to take CARES Act money and, and keep any stockpile they feel necessary, and we're not permitted to do it through the task force, even if we have the funds. So no matter what we need for the rest of COVID-19, I would also like to have a inventory, a stockpile for any future pandemics, or however long this is going to last. At this point in time, we're still focusing on the first responders, some of the nonprofits, such as the YMCA Food Program, the Center Medical Volunteers, we've been supplying them, and obviously, we've supplied a lot of the county agencies as we open back up for the green phase. So I'll, I'll be quiet now for any questions. And like I said, I'm really looking for guidance from the Board about how they want to proceed with this and who they actually want to supply.
Thanks, Jeff. This is Mike. So you hit, I think you hit the nail on the head when you said, we have to look at what we've used, what we're going to need, and then what's the stockpile going to look like? From my perspective, it would be good to have a few different scenarios where if this lasts until the end of the year, if this lasts until, you know, the end of March, end of June, the end of 2021, we're going to need a few different options to understand how much we're going to be able to purchase. And based off of if we take it until the end of 2021, how much PPE would we need? We can then use whatever surplus we have left for the next stockpile. But I wouldn't want to necessarily have a stockpile that we have now, and then we sort of are using whatever we're getting in between that stockpile and what we're receiving. We can, we can worry about the next pandemic after this one. I'd rather get things out as quickly as possible. I think you also make a very good point about the businesses. It will be difficult for us to supply 1,000 businesses with their PPE needs, and it may be easier, like you said, to use the CARE Act funds to give them the money directly. And in fact, we don't know yet how many businesses already have PPE for the next year. They may have already purchased that. So I, but I, but I do think it's good for you to know, in your office, to know how much PPE has purchased or utilized within Center County. And what we're doing with the business application and other applications for nonprofits is, when they're requesting money from the CARES Act funds, we can utilize that application to maybe ask some questions about PPE use so that we can get that information from them, and it would be helpful for them to be able to know. Now, I will say, if they're in a short supply, and they need some PPE, and we have some, I don't see the reason why we can't supply them, and I'd rather have them get PPE, keep their business open, keep their customers open, or keep having customers come in, and so they can make payroll and make the rent and all that, rather than saying to them, look, we, even though we have PPE, we can't give it to you. But I also don't want to put out, from my perspective, a sign that says, if you need PPE, come to us. It would almost be like a, a few rung down the ladder. We would, we would be the entity that would be giving out the PPE. So I think we need a schedule, and we need, you know, best-case scenario, worst-case scenario, all that stuff. We know how much we need to put aside. We also need to get data from businesses, but also from the nonprofits, faith community, all of them. I think we want to be coordinating as much as possible and making sure that we're aware of that. But I do think, Jeff, we do need that sooner rather than later. We have $14.5 million to spend on non-administrative funds, and we want to be able to make sure that we keep enough money for PPE available. And so we do really need to know that sooner rather than later. So we'll, I'll let everybody else weigh in, but I think, once, once we've, you know, once you, once you have the opportunity to respond, it would be good to know when we could get that information back from you, just to have an understanding of how much we can give out in direct business grants, and then some other things that we want to fund. So I'll stop there, turn it over to Commissioner Higgins, and then we'll have Commissioner Gershman weigh in as well.
Well, Jeff, I think you, you covered the broad categories. I think the situation, though, is much more urgent than Commissioner Pike was talking about. I think waiting until the end of this month is way too late. I think we should be ordering at least some supplies, possibly as soon as next week. Expecting our local businesses, especially in areas like downtown Belfont, downtown State College, to front the money, to buy the PPE at retail pricing, and then wait a month or two for the county to reimburse them, they do not have the cash. They do not have the time. I agree with Commissioner Pike that perhaps us interfacing directly with local businesses might just, might just be too overwhelming for our current staff, and perhaps we need to make arrangements through the State College Downtown Improvement District, downtown Belfont, the MBEDP, Belfont Inter Valley, and the CBICC. But, you know, there was, there was a potential strategy of waiting a little longer, hoping that supplies would increase for PPE, hoping that pricing would drop for PPE. Unfortunately, that, as you mentioned, Jeff, is not the case. We have huge spikes happening in the south and the west of this country right now. I'm assuming that once schools and colleges reopen, we should probably see another substantial spike shortly after that. I think that the time to do at least a first order of PPE is now rather than later. And expecting nearly bankrupt small businesses, nonprofits, and human services suppliers affiliated with the county that are also not in great financial shape to front money, buy stuff at retail, and wait a month or two for reimbursement is just not a good plan at this point. I think we need to buy a lot. We need to buy aggressively. We need to buy at wholesale rates. If you have perhaps a multi-county joiner, or CCAP has somehow got something that they're working on that's almost ready, that we could potentially look at joining those groups. But if they're saying, hey, you know, we're going to have a bunch of meetings, and we're going to talk about this, and maybe sometime in September we'll pull the trigger, we have 46,000 young people who think they're invulnerable and invincible, who will be showing up in five weeks. And we only have 26,000 pieces of PPE. I know the university's ordered a half a million pieces of PPE, but depending on what percentage of those are disposable, they could run through that in a couple of weeks. And that's just for the university. There's, to the best of my knowledge, nothing for our downtown businesses, our North Atherton businesses, our South Atherton businesses. I think this is probably about the most urgent thing we have on our plate right now. And I would like to see at least an initial order placed like the end of next week.
This is Steve. I, I, I'm going to take this like a whole other step forward. I, I think we need to order a ton of PPE. And we can, you know, we can figure out where it goes later, but we need to get it and get it while it's still available. I don't think money is the issue right now. I think availability. And I think we need to look at what particularly Penn State needs, and we need to help them. I think we need to help the, the medical community, and I think we need to figure out, you know, not only what the healthcare folks need and businesses need, but we need to stockpile this for the future. If we hadn't been forethinking 10 years ago, we wouldn't have had the supplies that we needed to get started this time. So I think we need to have a stockpile. We'll figure out where we're going to store it. I think we've got Center Crest online next year to provide us some storage space. So I'm not really worried about storing it. My biggest concern right now is getting it and making sure we have it. We have $14.6 million. I think that's the, the prime directive is to, is to get as much PPE in hand as quickly as possible. We can figure out where it goes along the way, but let's order a bunch of it and make sure we have it, because it's better to have it, not need it, than need it and not have it. So that's my take on it.
Okay, so Jeff, some, kind of bringing, bringing that all together, sounds, looks like we're going to do, you know, what's, what are the challenges behind getting an order in next week, and also starting to think about where we can place it? I do agree with my colleagues that we should order something sooner rather than later, but it would be good to know how, where we're going to be putting it in the interim, because it probably will take two, three weeks for the supplies to get here. And, you know, if we, if we've got 21,000 masks in-house, we should be getting that out. I mean, now, now, Jeff, now, I think this is a very, very important thing to appreciate. When you say that we've got 20,000 masks in inventory, you're talking about N95s, correct?
They're not all N95. Some of them are the surgical masks, like most of us have been wearing. A good portion of them are. Also, keep in mind that a good portion of it, potentially a third at least, pushing towards a half of them are C-drool masks that are N95s. They, they call them duckbill masks, but the straps that are on them are actually plastic. And once they're put on one time, that's pretty much it. They don't, they don't retract back like a rubber or elastic bands on some of the other masks. So, and that's what they were designed for, to be disposable. So I just want to make note that a large quantity of what we have is designed to be used one time only. People have been using them a little bit more, and, and everybody brings up a good point about storage, because, for instance, the first mask that we had, they were stored in a trailer up in a metal pole building subjected to a lot of heat and conditions, and that takes its toll on the dry rotting of the materials. The Center Crest part, that would be great. You have to understand, like, right now, our JIC room and EOC are pretty much full. Well, you don't have room for a lot more here. So keep that in mind. We, Jody and Abby have already reached out. When you saw the initial document and spreadsheet that I sent you on this, there were some relatively high numbers. We had, you know, the mask at 100,000 of each type. Because of the recent shipment of sand sanitizer and face shields, we'll be able to back off on that list a little bit. But that was a relatively worst-case scenario wishlist that I sent you. But we do have, we've already looked into who has available supplies and the pricing. So, and, and, you know, like we've all mentioned, that may have changed a little in the last week or two. But, and just to let you know, you mentioned about doing combined purchases with other counties if we need to reach a threshold of, of a minimum purchase order for, to save money. And we've been talking about that weekly since it started with the other seven counties within our terrorism task force. So I believe most of them are prepared to do that. Also, keep in mind, you know, we're the largest county out of that group. And we also, including Penn State, have a much greater population than any of them, closest ones to Blair County. So these are all things that we've, we're pretty much prepared to pull the trigger now, and, and we'll do whatever it takes to make this happen.
And Jeff, thank you for that. That's, that's, that's great points. The one, the reason why I was, was mentioning the fact that you don't really have any cloth masks is, we obviously know that for the businesses, we're not going to give them the N95s, because that's not where they need to go. So, so, and I agree with both my colleagues, that we do need to put an order in, but we do need to realize, how many N95s do we need? How many surgical masks do we need? And how many cloth masks do we need? Because we, we're just not going to buy N95s for everybody. We're not going to buy surgical masks. So there has to be a little bit of a mix of what it's looking like. And so it would be important to understand what that's going to look like. But again, let's put an order in, let's get that done. Just in terms of storage, the university has been incredibly helpful to work with. You know, if it's the BJC, if it's somewhere at the Beaver Stadium, I'm sure there's somewhere at the university where we're going to be able to put some PPE. And, you know, we've got a lot of other partners across the county. So I'm sure that they'd be willing to help us out if need be. Worst-case scenario, we take some of the CARES Act money, and we, we rent some space somewhere in a climate-controlled storage room. I mean, we have, again, we can use the money for that. So again, that would be good to be coordinating with and figuring out where we're with and figuring out where we're we're going to be putting this stuff. But Jeff, what about the lead time? What's the lead time for each of the each of this PPE? In terms of you put the order in, how long is it going to take to get here?
That I don't have the answer for specifically until we actually place the orders. Obviously, we're going to look for vendors that have in stock inventory. Also, you know, common sense is going to dictate that we're going to probably not order anything from China and some of the overseas ones that have been involved in some scams. And the information that we provided, the price wise, that was all looked up on the ECED state portable, which is, we would think would be the most reliable source. And and we try to, you know, certainly buy them all from the continental US. That way, it's less of a risk of scam. And because of the option of enforcement, if something goes wrong. The cloth mask is a real good point, Michael. And our original ones, I don't think we provided a list for the cloth mask on there, just the N95s and the surgical mask. So that's no problem for us to look that up and add that also. And that proposal I put in for that didn't really cover the university and a lot of the other things that that you folks have mentioned. And
And to go to Commissioner Dershowitz about university, they they've ordered, I think, from what we've gotten from them, they've ordered what they need, and they're asking us for reimbursement to cover those costs. So I don't, again, you have context of the university standing, they've they've already ordered, and they're just asking us for to offset some of those costs that they've made.
So Mike, can I say a few things?
Absolutely.
So one other thing, I'm going to put grant administrator hat on here. We have received many requests from a variety of organizations that have already purchased PPE, and they're asking for reimbursement. So that's a one area that we need to look at as well. So we're talking about a couple of different things. We're talking about, do you want to reimburse entities for already purchased PPE? I think that's part of this. And then what do we need to order to for our own county stockpile and for distribution out? So we want to make sure that we have both of those distinctions. In terms of storage, as soon as we get those election machines out of the Phillipsburg MDJ office, we have a very large garage in Phillipsburg. I know it's not exactly right next door. It may not be climate controlled, but that is one option. And we also have our vacant houses if we needed to put some things there in the very near term, short term. So we've we've got some options along those lines. Also, from a grant administration perspective, Jeff, this is going to be a tracking issue, but I think you're going to need to keep very meticulous records about what you've gotten from Pima versus what we're purchasing, so that we can make sure that the invoices and the supply and the and the the trail of where this goes can be brought into the auditing for the for the grant, because we don't want to mix those two pools. So there'll have to be some kind of a system to understand what was Pima, what we got from Pima, and then what we're purchasing with grant funds. So those are my comments.
This is Jeff, if I may. That's already taken care of. We did inventories when we received these shipments. And it's already all on spreadsheets down to the individual items.
Excellent. So if we can just see, you know, whatever, that'd be great.
Well, going back, I appreciate, I appreciate the reimbursements, but that's that's a different conversation. If Penn State doesn't need any further product, that's fine. I would ask them, though, if they would like some for the future, because they have enough for the foreseeable. But I'm thinking long term, in case we have another outbreak and it goes well in the next year, I would make sure that we have enough to cover our whole community. And I we have the resources. I think we ought to spend the money and and get the get them in here. Because when you have all the other counties across the country all using the same formula that they need to order this stuff, that doesn't lend very well to supply chain availability.
Yeah, I agree, Commissioner Dershowitz. I think that one of the challenges is with the university is the businesses, the nonprofits that are here, they're not going anywhere. I mean, they they may go somewhere if we if they don't get assistance and we don't help them out. But with the university, if they would choose to go to a virtual platform later in the year, they would need to understand that that PPE would have to revert back to the community so that we can utilize it. So we'd have to be, we'd have to be smart with how we give PPE out, saying, look, if you're not using it by a certain point, you need to get you need to disperse it back to us. Or and that could be a, that could be a requirement of receiving PPE, that they have to let us know how much they've expended, you know, throughout the months that we go forward. I'm just concerned that we give them a big allotment, and they don't need to necessarily use it. So that's that's my only concern with that. But again, sounds like what we're saying is, put an order in. You know, but again, I put an order in, again, Mark and Steve, you can correct me, but I'm I'm here and put an order in ASAP for the PPE, develop some sort of schedule, so we understand how long this stuff is going to last, estimating how long this is going to last. And in addition, we then have to figure out how much of the CARES Act funds are we going to use for reimbursement of PPE that's already been purchased. And we may have to do 25% of that amount for businesses and nonprofits. It might have to be 50%. But we need to understand how much that's going to be, because if that's $20 million, obviously we can't reimburse all that PPE. So we have to be strategic about that. But again, I'm hearing, order it ASAP, come up with some sort of schedule, so we understand how long it's going to last, and then figure out the reimbursements after that. Am I missing anything?
Well, my only concern is, is I, as we look at the the business use of PPE, I could see some of our larger employers having significant numbers. But we're going to be nickelled and dimed by small, you know, small little retail shops and in places that really, I mean, I don't know how you even administer that. At some point, you almost have to, as Mark said earlier, drop it off in the hands of of, you know, one of the the chamber organizations to hand out. So as far as I'm concerned, I think we should over order on PPE. We'll figure it out later. We have the funds to do it. I think that's really what this is about. If you want to allocate certain funds for reimbursement, but I mean, who's going to, are you going to give somebody $150 for reimbursement? Or are you going to give them 150,000? I mean, I don't know where you start and stop on that conversation about reimbursement. I would less worry about reimbursement than I would making sure that they have the supplies moving forward to continue to operate, at least through the end of the year.
So I I think Steve had a good summary. I think it's our expectation as commissioners that we're expecting we're going to be supplying a large fraction of the entire community. That's medical, fire, EMS, possibly the university, although maybe that might be more of a reimbursement. We don't know yet. All of our small businesses, our nonprofits, our county affiliate agencies, anything that the county would need. And since we're going to have a massive population influx happening within five weeks, we need to order it, get it delivered, and begin the distribution in five weeks. That is a huge undertaking. That's going to be a lot of work. And that means we need to order possibly hundreds of thousands of dollars of PPE. I know ASAP is a nice term, but let's make it concrete. If we don't have significant orders in by the 17th of July, with expected deliveries by, say, the second week of August, I'm going to be pretty upset.
Okay. All right. So we have a understanding of an order being placed by the end of the next week. And I appreciate what Jeff is saying. From a logistical standpoint, he has a limited staff. And Jeff, if there is a, again, if there's resources you need beyond this, please ask Margaret, let her know. We can be of help with, again, securing rooms, volunteers, you name it. This community will obviously help you out in any way that you need it. From a standpoint of an auditing standpoint, or an understanding of how much, just asking the controller's office, because we had a discussion last Thursday about, we start to use these funds. So if we put an order in for a million dollars of PPE, Jason, you were talking about there needing, there's some threshold, new, you know, there's some sort of kind of live audit that has to happen. Is there a, is, I mean, do you need anything in particular for that? Is that just something that we can do?
Hi, yes, sorry, that was on mute. I think for distributing, and Travis is on the call, he might be able to correct me on this, but I think if we're distributing the actual PPE, I don't know that we need to do that pre risk or pre award risk assessment. Travis, is that correct?
That is correct.
So we should be good there. And, you know, from my standpoint, you know, I I understand the logistical concerns with distributing PPE. But from my standpoint, distributing the purchased PPE is the easier route, because with this grant, we are on the hook for how all of the sub recipients spend that money. So reimbursements are fine. But if we're distributing cash or distributing checks for people to purchase PP, we're on the hook for making sure that they're actually purchasing allowable expenses, which makes it infinitely more complicated as we get down into to Steve's point, those smaller businesses. So so I so I just wanted to throw that in there quick. And just again, from the logistical standpoint, just an idea, and I couldn't present this to the team, but it just came up as this part of this conversation. But there are still some employees that are on full time furloughs that might be able to be brought back to help distribute and maneuver some of this material. And, you know, and certainly some of those are in transportation. So there's vehicles available, too, to move some of it. So I just put that on out there on the plate as well for for thought.
And there is another variation on a theme here, too. A question, really, Jason, for you. If we, if we, we, I guess we could deliver or distribute to some, but if there were some entities that wanted to purchase on their own, and we said to them, you have, in concept, this number of dollars, and you need to submit the invoices to us, so that the money wouldn't be going out the door until we had their invoices, would that address the audit concerns? So it would be different than us saying, here XYZ company, here's $10,000 for PPE, and then we'll catch up with you later to make sure you spend it correctly. What if we said, you can spend this amount of money on PPE, but in order to get reimbursed from us, you must submit the invoices to us?
I believe that would alleviate the auditing concerns, because reimbursements are infinitely easier, because we can comb through that ahead of time to make sure what we're distributing is allowable under the grant.
I mean, I I know to Mark's point that a lot of small businesses don't have any extra cash flow and and can't do that. So that that's, that's where it becomes a problem, if there's an entity that can't upfront the cash. So maybe we're looking at a hybrid here instead of just all purchase and distribution. Maybe it's some sort of a split.
This is Steve. I think unless it's a significant employer or manufacturer or something, I think we ought to do the distribution. I mean, if it's Penn State, or Hobaker, or somebody like that, I get it. Maybe even like a ResTech. But the the rank and file kind of business is not going to use the quantity. And keeping track of that's going to be a nightmare. I'd much rather just distribute it from us. We know what we have. We know where it goes. And we can account for it. But I don't think we're going to have that many businesses that are actually going to go out there and buy any significant amount of PPE that on their own. And I think we probably have the volume buying power to get a better deal and accommodate them.
Okay, so I think I think Margaret, as the chair of the CRBG team at this point, I think we, I think we've given you enough to work with on this. Would you agree? And you and the rest of the team and Jeff can figure out the logistics. I would say that prior to putting the order in, I think it would be good for us to know what that's going to look like, just so we have an appreciation of that sometime next week, prior to putting the order in. But the deadline to do that would be, we are in agreement Friday of next week. If anything comes up between now and then, we can certainly go from there. Okay.
This is Jeff. I just wanted to make a few points. For the financial folks and for the people signing the checks, from what I've seen so far, when you do make an order, they want usually want half of the money upfront. And that's what a lot of requirements have been. And then, so everybody's going to have to be able to move fast on that once it transpires. And then, you know, I'm not sure what the CARES Act specifically says in its entirety. But a lot of this stuff is also potentially covered under the category B emergency declaration funds. And I don't know if any of you have the take that the CARES Act money is totally replacing that. So yes, we have the CARES Act money, but we still have several hundred entities in the state signed up under the emergency declaration. I I get the idea that the federal government at their level wants want to use this money in place of a lot of that. But still something to keep in the back of your minds. So and and my perspective is, you know, to worry about the critical infrastructure, first responders, government needs, things of that nature in the beginning here. I know that my our direction from Pima is for a lot of this stuff has been divided between for profit and nonprofits. So with that being said, I'll be quiet now.
No, it's good to appreciate, Jeff. I think the what we've heard is that Pima is looking at us to spend down our CARES Act money, and they're holding that in reserves. So I think we're going to lead on this one, order the PPE, get it in here. And as as we said, we can figure out, we can account for it. But if Pima says, you know what, all that PPE is purchased back in July, we're going to cover it. So you can use some of that CARES Act money for something else. That's good news. But unfortunately, we can't wait. There's been a little bit of ambiguity from Pima on that. So but thank you for bringing that up. Similarly, for the PPE that we purchased for the elections, we know that we can use that, that the we can attribute the PPE purchase for elections to the CARES Act funds we receive specifically from the Pennsylvania Department of State for the elections. So, you know, we're very cognizant about utilizing and drawing down funds for that. But no, it's always bears repeating. So sounds good. Okay. So that was that was the PPE point part of the conversation. Margaret, I know we still want to get to the business conversation with SBDC. Is there anything else you wanted to discuss? I know Commissioner Higgins wants to talk a little bit about that. But anything else that we wanted to loop back to from your portion of your your comments?
No, I just wanted you to be aware that we have an implementation team up and running and give you 30,000 foot overview of what we're doing.
Okay. Commissioner, if you wanted to let us know about the business grants, SBDC, I know that we know that you've been doing work on that front.
Yeah, the SBDC is happy to work with us. I have a meeting scheduled with them tomorrow morning. As they talked about, they're happy to do a lot of the work for marketing the grants, for helping design the application, for helping process the applications, because of course, they know a large fraction of our local small businesses, because that's what they do. So I'm thinking at this point, it's just time to move ahead and tell them, yes, we're happy to work with you. What sort of paperwork do we need on both sides? We have decided that doing sub sub grantees is going to be very time consuming and very messy. So, you know, you'll be in an advisory role. We're not going to send you, say, several million dollars, and then have you cut money from the SBDC accounts. You'll million dollars and then have you cut money from the SBDC accounts. You'll help us with the applications, you'll help us process the applications, you'll give us advice on, you know, what percentage of their request you think is valid. And then, as Margaret's group will probably meet and do a quick review, the commissioners will do a quick review, and then we'll tell the Controller's Department, hey, we need you to cut 400 checks to these 400 different entities for these amounts. And, you know, get them in the mail as soon as you can.
One question. Before we marry these people, are there any other organizations out there that perform this function? There was some talk about some regional organization taking the lead on this kind of stuff. And I'm just wondering which, which direction is better, and whether the SBDC has the manpower here locally to do this?
Well, the local SBDC now has a staff of seven to eight people, and they're already going to be intimately involved in working with their hundreds of local small business clients in terms of the program. So if we end up working with some outside entity, there's going to be a lot of double work being done. Additionally, an outside entity may or may not have enough staff already available to handle this. And if you're talking about, I hope I get these acronym right, like the CDFIs, there really hasn't been a lot of CDFI activity in Center County. And so those organizations know virtually nothing about our local small businesses, our local small business ecosystem, what the long-term views of the county commissioners have been in terms of small businesses and economic development, whereas the SBDC has, you know, been engaging locally here for several decades. Plus, I think the SBDC is going to charge us noticeably less money than an outside group.
All right. Yeah, Steve, from talking with the CDFI that does the administrative work for, would do the administrative work for us, if hypothetically, if we would do a $5 million grant for businesses, they would be looking at a $100,000 administrative fee. And that would, you know, it basically would be 50% of our $200,000 allowable admin fee. And we talked a little bit about that before, about how that's going to, that'd be a challenge to spend that much versus the services they would provide.
Yeah, the SBDC is saying, hey, can you buy us some additional software licenses? Can you get us, pay for some additional training that we would need to utilize the more productive software? And, you know, maybe there's a few other odds and ends from a licensing standpoint. And their estimate is, at most, it would run in the tens of thousands. But, I mean, they have a staff of eight people, so there's only so many licenses that they would need.
Okay. So, Mark, in terms of any MOU or contract, would they be sending something over that we would be able to look at to work with them? How do they typically engage with, you know, individuals or entities that want to do grants of this type?
Right. So I will, we'll check with Tim tomorrow. I'm sure that they have some documents that they've used in the past that are vaguely similar to this, probably not for the same amount of money, but for the same general purposes. And, you know, because they're already paid by the federal government and the state to work directly with small businesses, I don't even think they'll be billing us for overtime. That's sort of built into their budget. So that'll be very helpful. But yes, I'll work with Tim in terms of any sort of MOU or letter that he might want from us that says, we'd like you to do this significant amount of additional work. We could potentially be looking at $5 million, maybe even more if there's later tranches. And, you know, what do you need from us? What are your expectations?
Okay, sounds good. Okay. Let's see, returning to the agenda, we still are in the County Relief Block Grant update. We do have interviews, our first interview is scheduled for this afternoon, for our first candidate. We have one tomorrow. In terms of questions, I've developed some specific to the grant, just general ones that I want to ask. But do we have, we typically, Kristin, if you could send out the latest version that we've used for department heads, that might be good, because we may want to ask some of those questions as well. But that might be helpful, if you could do that.
I can do that, not a problem.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. And we may want to jump on that, Eugene's, a few minutes before they get in to the room. And, you know, we can discuss anything prior to that. And so we'll go from there. Okay? Anything else on the block grant conversation? Okay, all right. Going then into town and gown, task force update. Margaret?
Thank you. I wanted to let you know that the University, Borough of State College, and CBICC have created a COVID-19 Town and Gown Task Force. I was asked to participate on this group as part of the Executive Committee. It was just released, kind of initiated within this past week. The purpose is to communicate consistent, uniform messages for community students regarding expectations of behavior in and around the center region and center county. There are also, there's also interest in talking about the recognition of the best practices and reporting and monitoring by businesses relative to consumer and patron behaviors, efforts to assist in contact tracing and testing. I think it's significant, and I appreciate that the county's been asked to participate in this because many of the issues that they are talking about are not confined to the geographic designation that would be considered Town and Gown. This afternoon, I will be participating on a call with the University, the Borough, Mountain Nuthy Health System, and the Department of Health lead on contact tracing to understand what their plans are for contact tracing, not only as they're working with the university, but as they've been standing up this contact tracing in our community. This is really significant because there have been different groups working on this. Lots of effort has gone into it, but we've not integrated the effort. And so having the county at the table for this, I think, is really important and significant. And I just wanted you to be aware that this is happening. I will report back on any information that we learn on the contact tracing piece and other important aspects of the COVID-19 mitigation efforts. That's it.
Thank you, Margaret. That's going to be a big, a very important thing to be a part of. So thank you for serving on that, and we really, really appreciate it. Thank you.
Thanks, Margaret.
All right. We do have personnel items. This would just be for facilities management, and it would be for consideration of the approval of the appointment of Devin Spicer, full-time facilities technician. And this would be effective July 20. Will there be a motion to approve this?
Motion to approve the appointment of Devin R. Spicer, full-time facilities technician.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Any final discussion on this? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
The motion is carried. Okay. Going into an update on the EEO policy for the county, Kristin had sent out a email for this, and this is for, again, an update. Here we go. She's sending out yesterday at 3 o'clock, and this would be the new draft policy. The changes are highlighted there. And this was in light of the Supreme Court decision related to LGBTQ employees and businesses, that being included in the Civil Rights Act. So wanted to update our policy to reflect that. And Kristin, if you wanted to add anything in, in terms of the changes that are being made?
What I did was I took some of the suggestions from the last meeting from Michael. I went out and looked at the PHRC, Fund for Human Relations Commission, I looked at the EEO page, and selected some of the terminology that they used out there for the broad categories and the more specific categories that they used. So this sort of then encompasses all of them with the addition of those terms.
Okay, thank you. And it is, what would be added in would be perceived gender, gender transition, gender identity or expression, and sexual orientation. Now, we had sexual orientation already on our website, and gender on the website as well. So those wouldn't necessarily be new to our statement, but for the policy, it would be reflecting that. So they would be up to date at this point.
Correct. We'll update the website. Once we have the policy updated, we'll update the website to reflect that as well.
Okay. Thank you, Kristin. Any other comments on this before we look for a motion to approve the updated EEO, EOE policy? Okay, hearing none, is there a motion to approve the updated EOE policy?
Motion to approve the updated EOE policy.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Any final discussion on this? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion is carried. Okay, thank you, Kristin. For discussion items, we have two, 2019 budget transfers and 2021 budget process. And we'll turn it over to Tom for this.
Hi, good morning. Thank you. As far as the 2019 budget transfers, we've had several workshop meetings and informational meetings where we've talked about where we've landed for the year for 2019. And for the county as a whole, we actually are looking at a increase in the unassigned fund balance of several hundred thousand dollars. Jason Moser's staff is working with our outside auditors to complete the comprehensive annual financial report, which they received an extension on and is due at the end of this month. As part of that, they're going to be sending out a draft for everybody in the Finance Committee to review. The, all of the transfers have been made for 2019, but in light of the COVID-19 situation, there have been some conversations related to our Transportation Department because they've been impacted, obviously, because of all of that going on. Their revenues were significantly down in the months of March, April, and May because they've not had the ridership that they typically would have. As far as 2019 is concerned, they finished well. They only had a very, very small deficit of about $15,000. In other words, they had that much more in expenses over revenue. So from a fund balance perspective, they're fine for 2019. So the question arose was whether we would like to transfer some money from the unassigned fund balance surplus that we have in 2019 and move some of that money over to the Transportation Fund, in light of knowing that they're going to probably have a shortfall this year based on where they're at. Again, this doesn't have to happen. You don't have to transfer the funds over, but it's just a timing issue right now as far as it relates to the comprehensive annual financial report and finalizing those numbers. Because once they become finalized and published, we can't go back and make any adjustments there. So if we were to do anything, we would have to do it in 2020. So this is just basically, I'm just looking for direction here and what you've heard it to do.
Thank you, Tom. And if you could give a recommendation, I think that would be a good place for us to start from, and then we can discuss it from there.
Yeah. My recommendation initially was to transfer over around $300,000 from the unassigned general fund balance surplus over to the Transportation Fund. Right now, we're looking at a, our unassigned fund balance at the end of 18 was nine point, a little under 9.4 million. With the surplus, we had about a surplus of a little over $500,000. So the unassigned fund balance would be at 9.9 at the end of 2019. So if you were to move 300,000 over, that would reduce that unassigned down to about 9.6. And it would then give that surplus in the Transportation Department at the end of 19, but it would get obviously chewed up in 20 with, with the revenue that they're losing. Again, with our conversations with them, they're doing things on their side to try to reduce as much expenditures as they can.
Okay, thank you, Tom. So we'll start there as a recommendation. Any feedback on that for Tom? Any, any different course we'd want to take?
Well, I'm pleased to hear that the deficit for 2019 only ended up being about $15,000. And I understand, especially for March, April, even into May, very difficult to adjust that particular department to a massive decrease in demand. Though I'm not pleased about the deficit in the Transportation Department. I do lean towards Tom's recommendation.
Commissioner Dresch, any feedback on that?
No, I'm good. I don't think we have a lot of options here, so it looks like a good one.
Okay. We, we know that Natalie Corman had sent out some information regarding transportation's 2020 plans, and then also going into next year, what that's going to look like. So we'll review those as we keep going and monitoring this. But Commissioner Higgins, if you wanted to make that as a motion in terms of transferring the funds, and again, this would be 300,000 from the unreserved fund to the Transportation Fund. Correct, Tom?
Correct.
Okay.
I will second that.
So actually, no, so Mark, Mark was on mute. Mark is on mute. Mark, sorry. Sorry, Mark.
Here I am talking to myself. Okay. So, motion, motion to move 300,000 from the 2019 county budget unreserved fund balance to the Transportation Department fund balance.
I will second that.
All right, it's been moved and seconded. Any final conversation, discussion on this? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? The motion is carried. Okay, thank you, Tom. Then, as we go into 2021, we know that is right around the corner, and we'll turn it over to you for this item.
Yeah, so tomorrow, we have an exec management meeting with all of our department heads and elected officials, and then we will have another one at the beginning of August. And we're just looking to try to provide some direction for them about the 2021 budget process in this meeting tomorrow, and then obviously in August. Typically, in prior years, what would happen would be that in the month of July, my staff would work on preparing budget packets and get that information and get it out to them at that next meeting in August. And we would send that out to the department heads, elected officials. They would typically have the month of August to put their budget submissions together and then submit that information back to the Finance Department. We would start to compile that information, give you a overhead look at where we're landing as far as a county, and then go from there and then have meetings. As you guys are all well aware, there are a lot of unknowns going into, into next year's budget cycle, especially related to revenue with what we're going to receive from the state, as far as where real estate tax projections are going to be, and also just the difficulties that we have this year because of the fact that, you know, we're having to do a lot of stuff remotely, and people's schedules and the demands that they have on their schedules. So I'm just trying to, you know, kind of get your thoughts and feelings on maybe where you think this should go so that we can kind of try to plan ahead. There's lots of different scenarios, different things that we could do. We could keep the budget very similar to what we have right now and then make changes from that standpoint. Again, I'm just trying to get feedback from you on maybe what you would like to see happen.
Okay, thank you, Tom. As we all know, a few short days and even weeks, the landscape can change when it comes to a lot of things. We know the state was $3 billion short of expected revenue for the last fiscal year. A lot of that was due because the shutdown, obviously, but also they delayed deadline for certain revenues to be, the due dates for revenues, much like we did. So they'll probably see a pickup in revenues as they come into this next fiscal year. But they've only done a five-month budget, so we don't know what that budget for 2021 is going to look like. So I would suggest, Tom, having more broad conversations with department heads tomorrow, giving them a little bit of an overview of some of the challenges, things that you're seeing. But really, we could dive into it in August and really be able to give them a little bit more details about the budget in August and what that's going to look like. Gives us a little bit more time to process it, gives us a little bit more time to flesh out the CARES Act funds and how we're going to use that to offset some of our costs. It also gives us a better opportunity to understand if the $600 in pandemic unemployment is going to be extended from the federal government, gives us a better understanding if there might be any more. There's discussions now, the fifth round of COVID relief. So there's a lot of things that can happen in July and early August before, you know, we start to send these budgets out. So my thinking would be, be more general, talk about, you know, some of the challenges we're seeing. But I wouldn't, my suggestion wouldn't be to go too much in detail, but we could use the month of July to flesh out some of the thoughts about what the budget may look like for 2021. But, and also, sorry, I'll also say this. I think data is a really crucial thing. The Natalie Corman, how she's helped to create, and her departments have put forward the data from their offices, so we can see how things are tracking, how things are moving. As much data that departments can start to pull together, I think are really crucial. And as much data, not only from a service delivery, but also from a revenue and expenditure standpoint, that they can pull together to estimate what type of budget they're going to end up this year with is going to be very important. We need to know how much of that unreserved fund we're going to be drawing down this year. That's a big portion as well. So they can be doing that right now. I don't think there's any reason that why they'd have to wait for that. But that's my general sense on that. We can open the floor, though, and Commissioner Higgins and Dershowitz can also weigh in.
I guess I'll start off. I don't see that we're going to have huge revenue shortfalls, or you might have some transportation revenue. But for the most part, unless the state really, you know, fiddles with the budget in the second half of their fiscal year, I think we'll be in pretty good shape. Our expenses should be down, actually, this year before it's done. And a lot of the costs from the COVID discussion, I think, are going to be picked up through this CARES Act money. So we should be in pretty good shape financially by the end of the year. We've, you know, we've weathered the tax season pretty well. I mean, I'd much rather be a county commissioner than a school board director right now. So that would be my only thought. I don't, I think we're in pretty good shape.
Um, I think Steve's correct in that it hasn't been quite as bad as we had thought it might be, but I still think it's going to be pretty bad. And I think we need to counsel department heads, especially department heads that rely on a significant amount of state funding, that if the state's $3 billion short now, and we have a situation where we have roughly 10% of Pennsylvanians unemployed, I mean, correct me if I'm wrong, but wouldn't that mean a roughly 10% hit to the state income taxes, et cetera? I know the state also gets some money from business profit tax, and I'm sure there's a lot of businesses aren't going to have a profit in 2020. But to Commissioner Pipe's point, we can't do anything too detailed at this point. Yeah, so talk realistically to the department heads and say, look, we're going to start the budget process soon, you know, keep in touch with all of your state contacts. Try to think maybe a bit pessimistically, because, I mean, thankfully, the county has so many in the bank, and while property taxes are down, you know, they're down maybe a million bucks. But yeah, be pessimistic.
Okay, that's helpful. I think one thing that I'm going to stress, obviously, is trying to get year-end projections, the departments, again, so to Commissioner Pipe's point, we can kind of see where we're landing as a whole for the year end and be able to be able to help us with that, and then move into the 2021 process. And again, maybe the thing to do is eventually at some point, have a meeting again with the administrator and myself and with the board, to sit down, maybe in a work session, just to see maybe where we want this to go.
Sounds good, Tom. And, you know, they're, you know, it'd be good to hear their feedback as well, what questions or concerns they have, or what they're hearing from state associations and whatnot would be helpful as well. So if there's any feedback, we'd certainly be welcome to hear it. But thank you. So that'll be tomorrow. I wish you the best of luck as you go into that meeting. And anything else you need from us on that note?
No.
Okay. Great. Thank you very much, Tom. Anything else to discuss on that topic of 2021 budget? Margaret, anything we're missing? Okay. In terms of an executive session report?
My mute button sticks. Sorry. No, there is not. I think you've covered it.
Okay. In terms of an executive session, any executive sessions to report, or do we need any?
No executive sessions to report. We do need an executive session to discuss a legal matter. Two legal matters, actually.
Okay.
Betsy's on the call with us to join the executive session.
Okay, sounds good. What we'll do is we'll recess this and hold our salary board meeting, and then we can come back to the board of commissioners meeting, just so we can do that. So any questions from the press at this point? We'll give that opportunity for anybody who needs any questions. Seeing no one here from the press, will there be a motion to recess the board of commissioners meeting?
Motion to recess the board of commissioners meeting at 11:20.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
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 Okay, we are recessed. Natalie, if you would be willing to end the recording.